Good evening. Chair calls to order public hearing for Resolution 020-22, Master Water and Sewer Plan Fall 2022 Update. Gentlemen, this evening we have Mr. Donbeck with us. Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Whenever you're ready.
Okay. Good evening, council members. The first section is Tables and Grids. There are seven service category map changes by the way of request and six map changes pertaining to future projects. Beginning with Revision 1, located in Grid A1 of the Water and Sewer Service Area Maps, located at the northwest corner of the intersection of Route 23 and 24 in Forest Hill and found on Tax Map 33. It includes parcel 429 and has lots 2 and 3 of the land of C. Kelly Smith &amp; White. The approved preliminary plan has entitled Forest Hill Estates, proposes to consolidate two existing lots and then resubdivide the land into 70 single-family lots. This is a Maryland American Water customer and the wastewater will be discharged into a county gravity sewer by way of proposed sewage pump station, Forest Main and Gravity Sewer. This property is being moved from the Water and Sewer 5 category into the Water and Sewer 3 category. Revision 2 and 3 are located in Grid B4 of the Water and Sewer Service Area Maps and Tax Map 56. Revision 2 consists of parcel 377 and is located at the corner of Route 924 and Patterson Mill Road. The property entitled 1703 Emerton Road has preliminary plan approval for a medical office building and future residential use for the remaining lands. The property is being moved from the Water and Sewer 5 category into the Water and Sewer 3 category. Revision 3 consists of parcel 56 and 60 and is located in between Routes 924 and 24 along the south side of Plum Tree Road. The property entitled Bel Air Village has preliminary plan approval for the consolidation and resubdivision of two parcels into seven commercial lots for retail and future mixed-use center. The project was formerly known as Evergreen Farms. This property is being moved from the Water and Sewer 5 category into the Water and Sewer 3 category. Revision 4 is located in Grid C5 of the Water and Sewer Service Area Maps, located in Amington on the north side of Seawell Road, just east of Amington Road. It consists of parcel 627, as found on Tax Map 62. The property entitled Seawell Road received preliminary plan approval for five single-family lots. The property is being moved from the Water and Sewer 5 category into the Water and Sewer 3 category. The last three revisions, 5, 6, and 7, are located on Grid D3 of the Water and Sewer Service Area Maps and were requested by the City of Aberdeen. Revision 5 is located in between Aldino Stephanie Road and Long Drive, just north of Route 22, and is currently within the City of Aberdeen limits. It consists of parcel 96 and 948 of Tax Map 51 and is being moved from the Water and Sewer 5 category into the Water and Sewer 3 category. Revision 6 is located off Long Drive and joins Revision 5. It consists of parcels 946 and 951 of Tax Map 51 and is being moved from the Water and Sewer 6 category into the Water and Sewer 3 category. These two parcels were annexed into the City of Aberdeen in 2021. Revision 7 is located off Gilbert Road and is known as the Wetlands Golf Course. It consists of parcels 350, 381, and 392 of Tax Map 43 and is also parcel 166 of Tax Map 51. These properties are being moved from the Water and Sewer No Plan Service Category into the Water and Sewer 3 category. These properties were also annexed in the City of Aberdeen in 2021. The Division Water and Sewer contracted with an engineering firm to prepare a water system planning study for the Hartford County Public Water System. The previous study included projections and build-out information that involved the base realignment and closure, otherwise known as BRAC. The new study was completed in March of 2022 and the final report outlines the required improvements to the county water system. This study and the subsequent report revised the previously proposed improvements to the system to allow their continued growth within a development envelope for the foreseeable future. The first revision is the removal of the transmission main along Route 24 and a short section along Enterprise Court and Hickory. The next is the removal of a parallel water main along Route 7 between Route 152 and Route 755. Next is the removal of another parallel water main along Route 7. This, however, is between Route 543 and Amington Road. Finally, we have the removal of a transmission main along Route 40 between Route 7 and Bel Blenheim Lane in Aberdeen. The last revision in this section is the addition of a proposed parallel water main along Route 755 from Van Beber Road to Route 40. The next section will be Chapter 3. The following five pages in the workbook cover Sections 3.01 and 3.06. These sections were revised per the request of Maryland American Water Company based on a comprehensive planning study prepared for them in 2020. The revisions discuss the current method of operations to serve the town of Bel Air. Next, we have Map 3-1. This is the Maryland American Water Service Area Map and it has been updated to include the Forest Hill Estates subdivision that was spoken of in the beginning of the presentation. Map 3-2, which is the City of Aberdeen's Water Service Area Map. This map was updated to include the four parcels of land that make up the Wetlands Golf Course. Section 3.13 was revised to add the three Hartford County developments that were discussed earlier. They are 1703 Emerton Road, Forest Hill Estates, and Seawell Road. The former Evergreen Farm development was renamed the Bel Air Village and its development data was revised. Table 3-1, Planned Developments. This was revised to include the four new projects with preliminary plan approval and to remove two projects that have had their utility installation completed. In addition, the Evergreen Farms project was removed from the list because it's been renamed the Bel Air Village. The last page of Table 3-1, as seen on the slide, shows the revisions to the summary of the remaining residential, business, and industrial-y zone units with approved preliminary plans within the last six months. As you can see, the net change in residential units was an addition of 11 units with 3,306 units remaining. There is also an addition of 166 equivalent residential units in a business zone for a total of 381 units remaining. There was no change to the industrial acreage. Table 3-2, Present and Projected Water Supply Demands and Plan Capacities Table was updated to reflect the most current data available from Hartford County and the Maryland American Water Company. The revisions pertain to per capita water consumption, residential population served, and domestic, industrial, and total consumption. Table 3-3, The Historical and Projected Connections to County Water and Sewer Table was updated to show the documented values for the 2021 through 2022 fiscal year as well as the projected values up to the year 2035. Table 3-6, The Inventory of Existing Community and Multi-Use Water Source Treatment Plants and Distribution Systems. This table was updated per the request from the Maryland American Water Company. The revisions include adjustments to permit numbers, average and max available water appropriation values, safe plant production capacity values, and average daily flow values. Table 3-8, Planned Water Works Immediate 5 and 10-Year Priorities. This table was updated to reflect the requests made by the Maryland American Water Company and the cities of Aberdeen and Havity Grace. The Hartford County Department of Public Works, Division of Water and Sewer, also updated the chart to reflect the findings from the water system planning study referred to in the first section of this presentation. As stated before, some of these significant changes are a direct result of the BRAC not coming to fruition. The table in this workbook includes only the projects to which changes are proposed. A comprehensive table showing all capital water projects in the county and the three municipalities can be found in Chapter 3 of the overall Water and Sewer Master Plan document. Moving on to Chapter 4, Section 4.10, Private Multi-Use Sewage Systems and Publicly Owned On-Site Sewage Systems with Peak Flows Greater Than 5,000 Gallons Per Day was revised to add the Campus Commons Project. Excuse me. Campus Commons is located at 2215 East Churchville Road, across the street from Hartford Community College. This site contains one building with a peak flow of approximately 1,800 gallons per day and is served by an onsite private septic system. With a proposed building or buildings, the site is anticipated to produce a total ultimate average flow of 4,200 gallons per day and a peak or maximum daily flow of 7,000 gallons per day. MDE requires that prior to issuance of a groundwater discharge permit, the project, the proposed project, be identified in the Water and Sewer Master Plan. It is also stated in the description that when final calculations of the discharge are provided, the county reserves the right to object the proposed facility and remove it from this plan if it does not meet all requirements of state and local law. Map 4-2, The City of Aberdeen Sewer Service Area. This was revised to incorporate the four properties that make up the Wetlands Golf Course. Table 4-2, Planned Capital Sewage Projects, Immediate 5 and 10-Year Priorities. This table was revised to incorporate the requests from the cities of Aberdeen and Havity Grace. The table in this workbook includes only the projects to which changes are proposed. A comprehensive table showing all capital sewage projects in the county and the three municipalities can be found in Chapter 4 of the overall Water and Sewer Master Plan document. Exhibit 4-1, Hartford County Existing and Future Sewage Systems. This is being revised to show the future sewer pump station for the Forest Hill Estates subdivision as described at the beginning of this presentation. In addition, the Oak Grove Sewage Pump Station is being removed due to a design change that allows Gravity Sewer to serve the area. The final section in the workbook are the written requests for the revisions from the various entities. That concludes the 2022 Fall Water and Sewer Master Plan Update.
Thank you, Mr. Donbeck, for your presentation. Counsel, at this time, your time for questions, anyone? Mr. Janjordan.
So, good afternoon, Mr. Donbeck. How are you? On, I guess it's probably this Grid B4, a couple revisions on Revision 2 and Revision 3. It looks like Revision 2, is that across the street from the firehouse and Patterson Mill High School down there?
Yes, it is.
So, there's a stream bed that goes down there. How does that impact what they're going to do with the sewer line? Because that stream has been eroding all the way back into some of the people's lots. So, where is the sewer line going to go?
I don't, I believe they're already connected to sewer. That I'll have to look at.
That corner lot was in sewer. So, I think that's going to be sewer.
Yes, there is a proposed sewer that goes through the back. They'll have to take, do typical precautions, take the necessary precautions to make sure that the stream is protected.
That stream has been deteriorating over the last, since I've been on the council the last four years. We've gotten some calls from concerned citizens that it's flowed into the backyard or it's deteriorating into the backyard at an alarming rate. So, I'm wondering where the sewer line's going to go, where that connects to. Is there, is there anywhere that I would be able to see where that sewer line's going? And who is responsible for then fixing the stream bed before they put a sewer line in?
The approved preliminary plan shows the sewer connection and that is the responsibility of the engineers to provide all the adequate protection of the stream bed and typically the idea is to make it as good or better than the existing conditions.
So, the county will pay for the revitalization of the stream bed, correct?
That would be done through private entities.
So, whoever's going to put that stream bed, whoever wants that sewer in there is going to have to fix the stream bed.
Correct.
Correct? Okay. And how do I get a copy of that? Is that somewhere that I can get a copy of what that plan looks like?
Yes, they're available through the P&amp;Z website.
The P in what?
Planning and zoning.
Planning and zoning, okay.
And you can go to the DAC, DAC Agendas and then in there's links that takes you to the preliminary plans.
So, Revision 3 is to create a commercial office building, but there's also going to be some residential buildings that were originally proposed. I don't see that in here.
The preliminary plan approval was just for seven lots. It was just a preliminary plan. Currently, there is two DAC plans that are in circulation right now that show that.
And they'll have to come back to you as well for those additional. Does that mean more or different sewer lines? What does that actually mean when they come back and they want more? What goes on there for that?
We have to investigate it. We have to look at the plans and see if they're adequate and see if they meet all of our standards.
Okay. I thought the original DAC, I know I was in the original DAC meeting and I know there was approval for mixed use and an apartment complex, but you're saying here there is no apartment complex. It's just a commercial office building.
What was approved, as far as I know, for the recent DAC plan that came through and that was approved, it was just for the subdivision of the, it was the consolidation of the two parcels and then resubdivision into seven lots.
When was this done?
That, what I'm speaking of, the seven lots, I believe that was a couple months ago.
Something's not jiving it for me. I'm sorry. It just, I know I saw the DAC plan where they had apartment complexes and everything else and that was a couple of months ago. So, either this is behind or something's there. Where do I find out more information about that? Same thing.
Planning and zoning is going to be able to do that. I know the plans that are showing all of what's going in there, the retail buildings and the apartment complex that you're referring to are in the, they're in circulation right now.
But that's not what you guys have approved for the water and, for the.
Correct.
Water and sewer. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Anyone else?
I might be able to clarify a little bit and help him.
He'll, he'll do that on his own, yeah. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Ms. Dixon, do we have anyone signed up?
There's no speakers, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation and this will be taken up at a future meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
This will conclude public hearing for 020-22. And if I may, I'd like to start the public hearing for Bill 22-019. Mr. Boniface? Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Councilman, I'll make sure that Planning and Zoning gets you a call tomorrow, gives you an update on where we are.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
So, counsel, I'm here before you at the request of the county executive to extend temporary moratorium we put in place for outdoor dining at the beginning of the pandemic. We had intended to look at the code and determine whether we should do some things on a more permanent basis. You know, the outdoor dining has been an advantage for people as we move forward, you know, that want to maintain that social distancing. And there's also an economic development component to it. But the county executive felt that the best way to handle that was we'd go ahead and continue the temporary moratorium for another year, which would allow a new council and new administration to look at it and see if it's something that should be looked at on a more permanent basis or allowed to expire at the end of '23.
Thank you. And we all can attest to the benefit that it brought to our businesses throughout COVID. So, we appreciate it. Councilman, any questions? Mr. Boniface? Ms. Dixon, do we have anyone signed up?
We have one, Mr. President. Josh Kozel.
Mr. Kozel? Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. Josh Kozel, P.O. Box 452, Boston, Maryland. Don't know where to start, but I guess the very first line here, "An emergency act." We're not in an emergency situation anymore. Understand the pandemic, understand some of the situations, and understand being healthy business, or healthy to our businesses around here and making sure that they can turn a profit. But that's not what this is doing. This is pandering to a pandemic that is over. It's been clarified by the CDC. Even Joe Biden says it. It's something that is not needed. And again, what Mr. Boniface said here is we looked at looking at more permanent situations. Well, why didn't you act on the permanent situations instead of sitting back and not doing anything? And especially here at the council level. If you want to make these things permanent, make them permanent. Stop pandering and going to the emergency acts to push something through. Yes, it's been talked about that this is something that we wanted to implement in the county for years and years and years, but to use a pandemic to do so is quite concerning. I do have a couple of questions here. The capacity to open up these restaurants initially, before the pandemic and before introducing these outdoor dining places. To my knowledge, they required a certain amount of parking spots. They had to meet some criteria. And it's also, to my knowledge, some of these restaurants aren't meeting that criteria anymore, but they are now having extended hours, or excuse me, extended places outside to eat. The restrictions inside, the every other table or every other seat, six feet here and six feet there, they're not there. The buildings are packed inside and packed outside. So, how can that be? Are they still, are they violating what they were intended to be at the beginning? And then, last but not least, you know, I'm glad that Mr. Boniface is here. Maybe he can answer these questions or Mr. Glassman can come give an actual presentation. But, to my knowledge, last year, Governor Hogan said that he recommends that this gets extended. This year, he was dead silent. Didn't make a recommendation. But it says here, "Whereas, due to the continued spread of COVID-19," I want some evidence and I want some information from the person that is recommending this, whether it be Mr. Glassman or Mr. Boniface, "the county executive again finds it necessary to continue to facilitate and encourage the continuation of social distancing and the operation of outdoor seating areas at restaurants, bars, breweries, nightclubs, to again renew the temporary moratorium on the application of certain provisions of the Hartford County zoning code to encourage outdoor dining." This makes no sense to me. So, I would ask you guys to do what is right. If you want it to happen, make it permanent, but stop pandering around for three straight years on a temporary moratorium. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else, Ms. Dixon?
There are no more speakers, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Boniface, for your presentation. This will be looked at at a future meeting and this will conclude the public hearing for 22-019.
Thank you, sir.
And now, Bill 22-020, Volunteer Firefighter Length of Service Award Program. Mr. Sanlis, good evening, sir.
Good evening, Council President, members of the council. Robbie Sanlis, Hartford County Treasurer. The county executive is proposing some changes to LOSAP, which stands for the Length of Service Award Program for our volunteer firefighters. And the changes deal with lowering the age at which a volunteer, when, at which, lowering the age for a volunteer when he or she can start receiving benefits as well as removal of the cap for the total monthly benefit amount. So, just a real quick, kind of brief explanation about LOSAP. It's a non-contributory, 100% county-funded, well, it's augment to the volunteer fire system. It provides a monthly cash benefit to volunteers who have met both service and age requirements. The service requirement is to earn 50 points in the year and points can be earned in various ways from going out on a, on a call, to serving on committee, training, what have you. So, if you earn 50 points, you have one year of service. The current program provides $13 for the first 25 years and $6 for the next 25 years to a maximum of $475. A few years ago, we bumped up the first 25 years to $13 from $12. It was part of a COLA initiative. So, an individual can start collecting when they have 25 years at age 55 or 10 years at age 70. So, this new proposal lowers that age requirement to 50 years with 25 years or 60 years with 10 years. So, there's no change in the service requirement, only in the age requirement. The proposal would also do away with the cap. So, if an individual continues to volunteer, that individual's monthly payment would increase by a rate of $6 a year. So, currently, there are about 2,000 volunteers in the system and of that amount, about 515 are receiving benefits. 455 of them are the primary volunteer and then 60 are surviving spouses beneficiaries. The surviving spouses receive 75% of the deceased spouse's payout. Now, that was another change we made a few years ago. Formerly, it was 50%. So, the change in age eligibility will mean that 132 individuals not currently eligible will become so. So, 87 of them will be due to the change from 70 to 60 and 45 due to the change from 55 years old to 50. And almost all of the remaining volunteers will be eligible, start collecting benefits in the future at a sooner date than they otherwise would have. There's also about 36 employees who have maxed out at that 50 years of service, that $475 amount, who would become eligible for the higher monthly payouts. Now, the exact benefits on an individual basis will kind of vary. You could have an individual who's, who has 50 years of service. Now, they have 51, so an additional $6 a month to an individual who just became eligible under the 25-year service provision and will be receiving a benefit of 325. So, you know, somewhere in those, those variances for, for all of the individuals. And any of these changes will become effective with the payments going out in the beginning of January. Again, it's a 60-month after, 60 days after the legislation is passed. So, the cost of all these changes is not just as simple as, as the extra benefits going out this year or next. And that's because we have a dedicated trust whereby we, we invest the county's contribution to LOSAP so that we will have the funds available not just to pay what the current beneficiaries are receiving today but so that we can pay what the current volunteers are earning today but won't be paid out for years to come. So, in order to determine what the county contribution to the trust needs to be, you know, each year we do an actuarial analysis. And when there is a proposed significant change, this is what we're dealing with here, we do another actuarial analysis for that. So, the changes that we've spoke about here today will cost the annual required contribution to increase by $734,000 over what it would have been. With most of that cost, about $700,000 of it coming from the change in the age requirement and then about $30,000 of it from the elimination of, of the cap for the longtime volunteers. Nearly all of that $734,000, also about $700,000, is for the prior service that was already earned but not funded. That's your, kind of your unfunded liability as opposed to your current year service, your, your normal cost. Because we're going back and we're saying that in those individuals, if they had that prior service from years past, you know, they would then become eligible for that, that payment. So, we have to make up that, that gap. Now, over time, that unfunded liability will go away. You know, if the county continues to fund the program, continues to fund it, you know, each and every year, which is something I would expect. That's always a point we make to the credit rating agencies each and every year, how Hartford funds 100% of its trust obligations, whether it's OPEB or the Sheriff's Office Pension or the LOSAP system. Now, the annual cost from year to year will vary kind of due to a host of assumptions changing from mortality to the expected return of our investments to the actual performance of our investments. So, with all of these changes, So with all of these changes, the estimated annual required contribution is about $2 million. It's actually a little less, that's less than it is this year and about the same as what it was in the years past. Now, as we get into the future, again, lots of uncertainty, you know, with particularly with, with investments. So we, we, we may very well see, you know, the costs kind of go up, go up somewhat in some years and kind of, and kind of swing back down. You know, but again, when we take these, these funds into this trust, you know, we're investing for, we're investing for the long haul. And so we've been the beneficiary of some, some very strong investment years and also some challenging investment years. So currently, the plan is funded above 100% at 109%. And if these changes are enacted, we would still be at the 94% funded level. It's still a really good place to be. Really, anytime you're over 80%, it's a good, good place to be. And then again, just to always remind that any of the funds in the LOSAP trust can only be used for LOSAP. So once we put them in there, they can't be reallocated to any other means, you know, returned to the general fund or, or anything like that.
Mr. Sanlis, thank you for your presentation. If I may, I'd like to have you formalize your presentation and send it to the council members, would you please? Counsel at this time, Mr. Woods.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Sanlis. In fact, oddly enough, we talked about this a week and a half ago or two weeks ago at the airport, so we threw a lot of it. Also, I want to take time, council members, want to thank all the members of the volunteer fire service that are over in the corner there. It's an important bill for us, is an important thing to help with retention, recruitment and retention, especially if the departments get out and put the information out, we can use it as a recruiting tool. I also want to take a moment to thank the administration, Mr. Boniface, and you, of course, for putting it together and bringing this up. Years past, we've tried to get this through and put it on, but there was hurdles with seeing with that $2 million a year and coming up with that. But this, this is definitely welcome and needed. I do encourage the fire service to make sure that we use this as a recruitment tool, providing this goes through. I know it only hits a certain age group and segment that this works. That when I joined the fire department when I was 16, I didn't care about LOSAP. In fact, I didn't even realize I was collecting it when I first joined, didn't even know about it. And one of the members at the time said, oh, you're not even eligible to get it until you turn 21. So there was actually a gap. They recently fixed that from 16 to 21. And so I knew nothing about it, didn't even know if I was going to be in the fire department that long, of course, and here almost 30 years later. But I think it is an important tool, especially people that hit in the little bit later lines of life and we can retain them. As you know, it's not going to change my thought on it. I've always worried about the, bringing it to age 50 for one reason. The guys that are men and women that are between 50 and 60, they're still strong, ready to go, can run fire calls and outrun a lot of people. I do worry that sometimes that might affect that, but I think we can come up with tools to, to keep them engaged and keep them coming back. It's not enough, it's not enough of a worry to make me put an amendment in or change or, or that. I don't, I think the benefits outweigh the one or two people that might say, hey, I'm at 50 and I'm never going to come to the volunteer firehouse again. But that is one concern. I think that's something that each company department can take care of internally to and fix. I'm also glad to see the extra piece that extends it. I know it was important to a couple of my members and other members across the county. So that, that's helpful, and that will definitely keep that knowledge base sticking around our fire service. Just because someone can't hop on the fire truck or the ambulance anymore, that institutional knowledge and the, what we need them back to help pay the bills and keep the station open and running is just as critical. So really no big questions, other than the $2 million total. That's the total amount. We're not adding to that.
Correct. That's, that's what the arc, what the arc, what the total arc is. And then if we wouldn't have made these changes, the arc would have been 2.1, 1.2, 1.3. So instead, it'll be 2 million. Which again, even that arc though is lower than it's been in some other previous years because of the fluctuations of the investments and the like. Up until this year, we were doing really well with investments.
That's right. Outstanding. So once again, it's a recruitment tool, and we can use every recruitment tool to keep going forward. The volunteer fire service is our best thing. We can keep going, and I promise you, it's something that needs to stay strong as long as we can possibly take it into the future. And if that means new recruiting tools and, and tax, tax credits in the near future to keep members in and bring them in, it's something this council and this county has to do moving forward. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. Mr. Boniface, I can tell you may be getting requests to add names to that bill's sponsors.
The county executive would welcome any questions.
Thank you.
I'll put all of you on it.
Mr. Bula.
Yes.
Did you want?
No.
I'm sorry. Mr. Schreutsch.
I just want to thank the administration for bringing this forward. I think that anything we can do to attract and retain our volunteer fire EMS, it's a, it's a great thing because if you just look out in the crowd, you don't see too many younger folks. I do see a few, and I encourage you to get your friends involved with this and, because we know it would cost a heck of a lot more if we had to have a paid fire service. So, you know, we're already doing paid EMS, and I think that's the right move there because when you're in an emergency situation and you're making that call, you want somebody to show up. It's a paramedic and an ambulance. You want that. And each day I drop my daughter off at work, at work, at school, I see the progress down at Bush's Corner by the North Harford Middle School and High School complex. And, you know, it's great to see that. I think that's going to help things up in the north end, but the more we can do with initiatives like this and other initiatives, the better we're going to be in the future. So just please extend my thanks to him on behalf of all of our members that serve our community.
Thank you, Mr. Schreutsch. Mr. Janitor Dan.
Thank you, Robbie. Appreciate it. I'm looking forward to seeing that. You spewed out a lot of numbers, so I caught some of them, but, but definitely appreciate that. The one thing I picked up on was, I think you said you put a COLA in this year or something for that?
A few years ago, this, under this council, we, more or less it translated to about a 20, an extra $25 a month. We went, the first 25 years went from $12 to $13.
Okay. Why can't that be in there every year? Does that amendment have to be added to this to give that COLA based on, since inflation has gone up tremendously? Can we make an amendment, put a COLA in there? And can you tell us how that might affect next year?
I think we would need to then do, if you had an automatic COLA, we would need to do another actuarial analysis. It's like with anything. I mean, everything then requires additional, you know, would require additional funding, to what extent that would be. And, you know, that's difficult, that's difficult to say. Probably, I mean, an automatic COLA would probably have a decent fiscal note attached, attached to it.
Can, can you give us an idea what that would be? Is that too hard to do or what?
Well, I mean, when we went, so the last time that we did the, and again, things kind of, kind of fluctuated. It was, it ended up costing the, it's, it's difficult because we kind of have multiple parts kind of moving, because we also changed the, kind of the assumed rate of return, and there were some other factors. But the actuarial analysis taking into consideration, the COLA and the, the surviving spouse change, changed the, the arc from $2 million to 2.8. And then, and then, you know, we, through some other changes, it came, it came back down to 2. So it could be something in that comparable range, and again, another $700,000, $800,000. But then if you had a, a ongoing COLA, then that would be considerable to that, because then that would, that would change every year. So if you had a, whatever it was.
So what if you did a COLA that was maybe after two or three years instead? Because how long was it before that we did a COLA increase the last time?
It was a decent amount of, a decent amount of time.
And we all know $25 five years ago isn't $25 today. And I know that certainly doesn't seem like a lot and maybe the change, but it certainly would help, you know, in the long run, like Councilman Wood said over here and, you know, with some of that in the long run. I would just like to know that, that amount, where something, maybe we can look at that where we could put in for a three or four-year change, maybe not it's an automatic every year, but maybe three years down the road or four years down the road, something else.
Yeah, and I think it's, you know, that we can discuss with, with, you know, the new administration, new council, like, you know, doing that type of actuarial study. You know, again, we're in a weird situation right now with, with what's happening with the investment markets and the like. And again, anything that, that, anytime that we have, anything that raises that arc is, you know, that's funds that can't be used then for other things, whether it's operating funds for the volunteer fire company and like, not, not saying that it's not a worthwhile initiative, but we.
Well, I have, I know another place where I can get money, but I'm not going to bring that up right now.
Okay.
I'll bring it up later.
Anything else?
Yeah.
Mr. Woods?
Thank you. I think when we adjusted this a couple of years ago, I think we added where it said it had to be reviewed every so often. I think we added something like, instead of it just being whenever the county exec calls on it, I can't remember exactly, but I thought we.
It's subject to annual appropriation. I can look back in the, in the legislation. And again, we do a, an actuarial analysis each and every year.
Right.
So.
Well, maybe a friendly amendment would be something like every three to five years we review if a, if a COLA is needed.
I think something that just triggers that to look at.
Counsel, Mr. Bula.
Yes, thank you, Council President.
I called on you once.
Excuse me?
I called on you once.
Yeah. I thought that was for something else.
It was, you missed it.
I did. No, I just wanted to take this opportunity again to thank the administration for bringing this bill forward, but also I would like to take this opportunity to thank our volunteer firefighters for the service that they provide each and every day and for being patient. We have a lot of work to do as far as getting you the necessary support that you need as far as barracks, living conditions, all these things. And I feel that the council, well, I know that the council is working to get these things, you know, in your hands, the things that you need to do your job each and every day. And I just want to thank you because, you know, we're blessed in this county to have such a volunteer firefighters. I mean, we truly are. And I just want to thank you personally. It's, it's just an outstanding. And, you know, like I say all the time, what you guys do, what you volunteer to do passionately, you know, Councilman Bula will give you a quarter million dollars to go into that burning building. It's not happening. It's not happening. So I want to thank you, you know. That's all I have, Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Bula.
Council President.
Anyone else?
I, gentlemen, I, I agree with him 1,000%. I want to thank you for your service. And, and ladies, I want to thank you for your service to our communities, our county as a whole, our neighboring jurisdictions. No matter what it is, you guys are always there, and we appreciate it more than you know. So Ms. Dixon, anyone signed up?
Yes, Mr. President, we have one. Rusty Iyer.
Mr. Iyer.
Name and address for the record.
Rusty Iyer, 2610 Cheston Hill Road in Farshill. You've made my job a lot easier than I thought it was going to be. I'm here to represent, as you know, I'm the president of the association, and we want to thank the county exec and his administration for introducing this bill, and we want to ask the council support. As Councilman Wood said, it's a great improvement retention. It's going to make it more attainable. People are going to see that, and I think we will be able to retain a lot of our members. And I think it will bring some members in, because we'll see, you know, what, what is available. Again, Councilman Wood said he didn't even know it was available, so we do need to get better at that. But I think by ma, making this change will really enhance it and make it a much better tool for us. So we just ask for your support, and we thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else, Ms. Dixon?
There are no more speakers.
All right, with no one else signed up, Bill 22-020. This will end the public hearing this evening, and we'll take this up at another time. Bill 22-021, Tax Credit for Properties Near Refuge Disposal System. Mr. Woods, okay. Mr. Sanlis.
Council President, members of the council, bringing forth this bill as we do each and every time this year, although a little bit earlier this year due to the fall schedule. This bill requ, this bill provides for 100% local property tax, county property tax credit for those properties that are within 1,000 feet of, of the landfill up in Scarborough. Kind of the idea here is that the county as a whole benefits from the landfill, but the cost of, of dealing with the landfill is probably disproportionately borne by the surrounding residents. So this is a way of, of the county, well, it's kind of compensating them in that, in that regard. This bill has 36 eligible properties. In order to be eligible, again, you have to be within 1,000 feet, and it has to be your primary residence. So if you were to use it as a rental property or commercial property, things like that, it would not be, be eligible. 36 for this upcoming year, that's 33 in the legislation itself and three in some additional amendments. That's one more than we have this current year. It kind of bounces around again in that 36, 35 range from year to year, again, based upon how, what people are doing with their individual property and the like. Fiscal impact of this is approximately around $70,000. Of course, we won't know the exact until the State Department of Assessments and Taxations comes out with what the, the assessments will actually be for July 1. And this is for a next tax year, the tax year that, that begins in July of, of 20, the years are starting to blend together, 2023.
Thank you, Mr. Sanlis. Mr. Schreutsch, you typically speak to this. Do you want to?
Sure, I just want to ask for my colleagues' support on this. As you know, you know, living near a landfill isn't the greatest place, place probably to live, so they do tolerate a lot, and there's a lot of unknowns with litter contamination and other things that are very unpredictable. You know, the dust, the noise, the, the seagulls, the buzzards, you know, they deal with a lot, and they deal with a lot of traffic on the weekends, I can tell you that. It's usually lined up on Scarborough Road. So just again, appreciate your support. This is a bill that I modified probably a little over a decade ago when we were going through the landfill expansion, increased it to 1,000 feet and a few other tweaks we made to it. But I can just tell you that, you know, every community needs a landfill, and this happens to be that this is the location of it. So for all, all of us to be able to go up there anytime, Monday through Saturday, you know, and drop your material off, and that, and that goes along with the litter. I mean, you know, people aren't really neat with taking their stuff to the landfill and, you know, a lot of times they wind up with things in their yards and, you know, it blows out of the vehicles and things like that. So again, just appreciate your support. You know, we're fortunate that we do have an off-site place for the majority of our trash goes, but I can tell you that it's still a very busy place up at the landfill, as I spent many days up there dropping off lots of signs recently. So I can tell you, it was busy.
Thank you, Mr. Schreutsch. Anyone else want to speak to, Mr. Wagner?
Yeah, this, this is nothing new. It's just an annual thing that we do, and then we, we do it graciously. I'm just curious about the count. In the, in the bill that you got in front of us, you talk about 32 applicants to start with, and then there's three additional.
Four.
Well, is there four?
Yeah.
Four extra properties?
Well, there is, there is three. The, the amendment later on will.
Right.
Will correct that 32 to.
36.
To 36, and there'll be three additional names added where, in the legislation itself, there's 33 addresses. It says 32, so there was a.
Right, okay, that, that clears it up.
And one of the things that makes this, we, we, we've gotten much better over the years in, in getting email communication and the like with, with the, the property residents. But again, there's always some fluctuations that come from individual properties, maybe they, they rent it from year to year. We always, we always have a handful of people that, that we, when we run out of, of solutions on our own, we, we, we punt it over to Councilman Schreutsch, and he goes out and collects the names himself. And I know we had a couple of them this year, and just trying to make sure we had everybody in place, but we are, we are comfortable now that we have all of the eligible residents, so nobody will be, will be without this.
Did, did we add more than what was last year's number?
Yeah, last year was 35, this year is 36. So again, sometimes like a person will, will have a property that they rented last year, and then maybe they decided not to rent it this year or, or something along those lines. So it bounces around that number. But yes, one more next year than, than this year.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Mr. Schreutsch.
I will say, I wish there was an easier way. I don't have a problem doing this, but I do kind of in the back of my mind, you know, getting down to the final days here, I just wonder what's going to happen next year. You know, this year I ended up, for example, there was one of the residents, I found out example, there was one of the residents, I found out that she was in a rehab facility, so you had to go down to bell camp this time. So, you know, I'm just, we're doing a lot better. I'm not running around trying to collect like a dozen of these anymore. So, but it is a little bit of a little bit of a chase I do annually. And I don't mind it, and I love doing it. And I guess if, even though I would be sitting up here in the future, if you need me, I guess I would say that I would volunteer myself to do that if I need to. But because I care about these people, I know what they tolerate, and, you know, these are people, for the most part, very, very limited income. Some are elderly, like the one I visited. I mean, she was probably, she may have been in her 90s, easy. So, you know, if there was a way to tweak the legislation, might just make it a little bit less problematic. I know that things change, like you said, Robbie, with, you know, I guess my opinion is, is like, maybe to offer a modification, it's like, what's the difference whether it's owner occupied or not? I think that's the main reason we got to go do this, because we don't know if they're all still owner occupied. Well, I don't really see what the difference is if it's rental occupied, right? So if we make that as a correction, then we don't have to do this anymore, and they just get the credit. You know that this is, the properties are around 1,000 feet, you can use GIS system the county has, and you know where the properties are, and just change it in a way that it, that the properties within that area get the credit. And I think that might be a solution, but there might be a reason why we don't do that, too.
And I think it's some of how the legislation was
It might take enabling legislation.
was written, that it said that it kind of more or less kind of required the county council to, you know, determine, determine the properties and kind of list them, list them out to have that application. I mean, we know which ones are homeowner occupied because it's in the State Department of Assessments and Taxations. That's how we kind of know who to target. When we go in there and see, hey, this is homeowner occupied, let's, let's work on making sure we get those, those ones covered. So again, I think you would then be looking at a change in the legislation. It is a fairly manual, manual process. And of course, this is only for some 36 people. With other tax credits and the like, we have, you know, a much higher number. And correct, it does, it creates some
True.
administrative issues.
And it used to be, I remember there was some date that was attributed to it, like, before a certain date, but we got rid of that. We kind of cleaned it up. But, you know, I just want to try to make it easier for my colleagues in the future, that's all. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Dixon, do we have anyone signed up?
No, Mr. President, there are no speakers.
All right, with no one else signed up, this will conclude the public hearing for Bill 22-021. Thank you, Mr. Sales. And this will be taken up at a future meeting. Brings us to Resolution 021-22, Detention Center inmate weekend fees. Warden, good evening, sir. Mr. Robey, good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Thanks for saving the best for last, Mr. President. Good evening, council. For the record, Eric Robey, Director of Legislative and Community Affairs, Harford County Sheriff's Office. To my left is the warden, gentleman that probably needs no introduction, but Warden Dan Galberth from our detention center. We're here this evening to talk about the boarding fee. As many of you know, we have a weekender program here at the Harford County Detention Center. It's, of course, designed so that individuals that are sentenced here in Harford County that are employed can continue along with their gainful employment while they're actually serving their sentence to the citizens of Harford County. What this program, what this program does and what this resolution will do is actually put a process in place that will give the gentleman to my left, the warden, the ability to waive those fees if there is a hardship that comes into play. So what happens here is, as it currently stands, when an inmate is sentenced to the Harford County Detention Center, they'll go before a judge. The judge will then have the ability to waive their fees. Normally, this happens when their attorney asks for it. So we're seeing a process where sometimes, you know, it's not based on income, it's not based on needs, it's just based on whether the attorney asked for it or not. What this resolution is seeking to do is to put that process in place so that our warden of the detention center will be able to waive those fees. Currently, those fees are two hours, two hours of their hourly, of their hourly rate multiplied by the number of credits that they're actually serving. So the number of weekend days that they're serving here in our facility. So I will now turn it over to the warden, and he'll give you some, some statistics on the program.
So this first came to light about a year and a half ago when the county came to the detention center, was questioning the reducing revenues. And it was all revolving around COVID. The weekend program was non-existent. The inmate population went down considerably, and we explained that to them. It made us start looking at the weekend program, working with the county law department, and trying to establish the grounds and the law as pertains to the weekend program. And in the law, it says that there has to be the governing body, which is the county council, has to set a procedure in place. Like Mr. Robey said, the different judges in the district court, circuit court, there was no consistency on the waiving of the board bills. So we are just asking to do what the law is saying is put consistency in the waiving of the board bill and allowing the detention center to be the central repository, the central decision-making on the weekend program. The weekend program is very important to the citizens of Harford County because we have some model inmates that just got into a little bit of trouble, and they were sentenced to detention center. They're working individuals that have jobs during the week and even on the weekends. We call it the weekend program, but it's not really a weekender program because there are people that work Friday and Saturday and Sunday, and the judges then sentence them to like a Monday through Wednesday type sentence. So even though it's called a weekender program, it's truly not. It's, it's, the judges have the ability to sentence somebody up to 48 hours consecutive confinement. We just call it the weekender program. It's a program that is a program offered by Sheriff Geller, you know, who runs the detention center. So we just want to make sure that the policy, the law, all align to this. Just to give you a little bit of information, it costs about $233 per day to house an inmate at the Harford County Detention Center. I currently have anywhere from 30 to 40 weekenders coming in after their sentence. So the majority of them come in on a Friday night between the hours of 5:00 PM and 8:00 PM. Forty inmates coming in at one time through the interagency processing center is a huge strain on the staff in the detention center because we have, we have to process them into the facility, both through booking and also medical, which causes me to sometimes have up to eight deputies on overtime working just to get these inmates in, receive them, search them, give them into their inmate uniform, and then getting them over to medical for medical screening before they're housed in their housing area. So that's where the strain is put on the detention center and the added cost for housing these particular inmates. But I do see the benefit because we are keeping Harford County citizens employed. It allows that to happen. So we're just asking to formalize it and give a way to, if need be, waive these board bills.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Robey?
No, just, Mr. President, as the warden mentioned, as you can imagine, if someone's sentenced for 20 days and their sentence is through that non-consecutive period of 48 hours, the weekender program, they're coming in and out of our facility 10 different times, whereas that inmate that's just sentenced, that does their 20-day straight sentence, they're coming in once, they're leaving once. So as you can see, there's where the added cost comes into play, and that's why the correctional services article in Maryland law actually gives the ability to the local government to charge that fee for boarding, for lodging, and for clothing.
No, I, I do appreciate the judge's understanding that we need to keep everyone employed as much as we can and doing everything they can to work with them. So, council, any questions? Mr. Woods?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for the presentation. What are some examples of the hardship that you would, someone would request?
So, of the hardship.
And how would you set that standard?
So if we had a parent that is unemployed, but the only time they can get a family member to watch your children while they're incarcerated, and they're unemployed, they're a full-time at-home parent, that would be a consideration to waive the board bill.
Thank you. Mr. Janjordano?
Good evening, gentlemen. So what was, what's the, is it the daily rate of 220-something that we would charge them?
No, no, no.
No, okay.
So what they're doing is they're paying, so if their hourly rate, let's say their hourly rate is $40 an hour. So they're going to work
In their, in their
Forty-hour week, in their real-world job.
Okay.
So they're going to be charged to, they're going to be charged for two hours per day that they're in the facility. So they would be charged $80. And then there's also a standard that's set by the Correctional Services Commission that says it can't exceed the amount, which would normally be charged for lodging, meals, and clothing.
Same for males and females?
Yes. So the, the minimum that we would charge somebody is $1,250, which is minimum wage.
Okay.
The maximum, in the example, the $40, the max we would charge somebody per hour is $27.96.
Okay.
So it's not their, the max, if you have a $40-an-hour job, the max you're going to charge is 27, $27.96.
Do they, do they have to prepay?
So, and that's, that is something they have to pay on their weekend of incarceration. And we have a lot of inmates on their last weekend because they know they're not coming back, they don't pay that board bill. So in the policy, they're going to have to pay their last week board bill in advance of their last week. So we have a lot of inmates that don't pay their, and we just put their, their amount due in the cost recovery because I hate to say this, we see a lot of these
Get them next time.
coming back.
Yep.
So we'll get it the next time.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Janjordano. Anyone else?
Counsel President.
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Counsel President. Good evening, gentlemen. So do inmates pay right now in the program?
Yes.
Okay. And so how long have they, have they been paying in this program? When did that start? Do you have an idea?
I don't know. It would go back to when 1990s, when the legislation was entered.
Yeah, so in the early 90s.
Okay. And so you said it was $233 for an inmate to be housed and
For medical food, clothing, electric, yes.
Okay. And currently, we have about 40 that are on the work release program?
It ranges anywhere from 20 to 40. The average is about 35, 40.
And in Section 11801, it says the word reasonable, right? So what, what do we determine as a governing body as being reasonable? Is the $1,250 or is the $27.96, would that be considered reasonable under, you know, what everybody else or if anyone else is, has this in place? Do you understand my question?
So the, the county council doesn't set the amount. What we're asking for is just setting the process to waive the board bill. I believe there's state law that talks more about the max weekend, and that's the $27.96 that we can charge, and minimum, minimum wage is set by, you know, the state.
By the state. So, so, Warden, when, when, you know, these inmates come in, do they get a booklet or pamphlet that tells them what their expectations are?
So what they, in the new proposed policy, they would come to the detention center at least two weeks in advance. They would meet with our admin staff. They would go over the rules of the program. They would go over the amount that they would have to bring in their first day of incarceration. They would receive a medical packet because we need medical information, and they go over the rules so they understand the rules. The medical packet would have to be submitted three days before their incarceration for medical to bridge over their medicines that we need to administer to them while they're in the detention center. So it's all pre their first night coming in to get booked in and receive all that information.
So they, there is no doubt that they know what their expectations are, right?
Yes.
All right. And are there any other jurisdictions that are doing this type of program that are, you know, asking for the warden to, to have the ability to do the waiver?
Most of them don't allow waivers.
Oh, they don't?
Yes.
So, so, so how many other jurisdictions are doing this?
So
Or have this program in place?
When I did a survey, eight other jurisdictions have the program. Most only have one to five inmates on the program. The other jurisdiction that has a large population's in our county, and they average 30 to 35 inmates on their program, so we even have more on our program. Your Baltimore County does not have a work release program. Cecil County does not, Charles County does not. There's a lot of jurisdictions that don't have the program.
Okay. And, and finally, to put a button on this, if an inmate fails to pay, then what happens to that inmate? Do, are there other fines and levies, you know, given to that inmate, or how does that work?
So if an inmate comes in and fails to pay the particular weekend, we then advise them that they need to repay double the next time. We don't violate them. If they come in a second week in a row and don't pay, then we will convert them to straight time. Just like if we have an inmate that breaks the rules of the program, we violate them, we convert them to straight time, and then they just stay with us until they're under their incarceration.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Warden, if an inmate doesn't pay, who covers that cost?
Harford County.
Thank you.
So, I'm sorry, Counsel President, so
Mr. Johnson.
So that money doesn't go to like a collection agency or anything like that?
No.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Counsel President.
You're welcome. Mr. Janjordano?
Yeah, one more thing. Warden, I've known for the last 15 years of a lot of people that have, in my business, that they employ a lot of people that are in the work release program. And it's probably been a lifesaver for a lot of these people that they've been able to keep their jobs, do their, their time that they're allotted for, and then to continue on with their, their life. It's not shattered, and most of them don't go back and do that. So it is, it is a, is a great program. I'm glad that we have that. I've had people tell me that, that, look, I can't get to see you until this time I'm, you know, work release program. And I know people hire a lot of these people for the work release program, too, that they're mostly good in people. But, you know, sometimes things happen. So I, I'm glad that we're still doing the program. I think it's a, and it's nice to see that we're one of the bigger ones that have it. Baltimore County doesn't have it. So I do appreciate that, and I think somebody who has to go away probably appreciates that as well.
I just want to clarify, the work release program, we're here talking about the weekender. The work release program, we have not restarted yet because of COVID. So, yeah, the um
Okay.
The work release is still not operational because of COVID. This is the weekender.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you, Mr. Janjordano. Anyone else? Mr. Woods?
Thank you, Mr. President. With, you brought up the medications. Are inmates allowed to bring their medications, or does the county supply it completely?
County has to supply, yes.
So if it's something unreal expensive, we're, we're paying for that, too?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. Mr. Johnson?
One more question. So, Warden, it's two hours of the inmate's hourly pay multiplied, correct?
Yes.
Correct. Okay. And so, so that, that's already in place, right? That, that section is already in place. So you're, you're doing that already?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Last time. Anyone else? Ms. Dixon, anyone signed up?
Yes, Mr. President, we have one. Gillian Miller.
Good evening, ma'am. Name an address for the record, please.
Good evening, Gillian Miller, 408 Chrisfield Drive, Abingdon, Maryland. I want to start off by saying that I think that our correctional officers have more than enough on their plate without the additional job of processing so many inmates in and out. From what I'm hearing, it actually sounds like the program is just not beneficial at all. And so I just had a couple of concerns with it. I'm really, I really appreciate the presentation you guys gave because it helped me with some clarification on things that I had concerns about. I do think that before making a decision, I would ask that you present data to show how much of these state-of-pay fees are actually collected in other systems and in this current system, because I know that that's something with many of the systems that's not actually happening, and so the fees kind of just linger. And yes, we are going to, as Mr. Janjordano asked, we are going to end up paying for it. The county is going to pay for it, but at the same time, the county is already paying for the individuals to be incarcerated and in the jail system. So that's one of those things. I think that our prison system should not, should be about reform and not financial gain. Our system only attempts to reform at the jail level instead of at the poverty level, and this makes it ripe for discrimination, not necessarily color discrimination, financial discrimination. So that's one of my concerns around this, leaving the decision just on the warden. You know, I think that there should be some oversight that's also included in the bill. So that's a concern. People with criminal recor- People with criminal records already struggle to find employment. And yes, they did the crime, but if they did their time, why does the record continue to follow them? We have so many, um, locations, I know in Harford County, that are in need of volunteers and volunteer services. And as I said, it seems like the program itself is just not beneficial cost-wise to our county. It's not going to be beneficial for the warden to have to make those decisions. We should be able to utilize those people in other areas. And so those are just, you know, my feedback items that I wanted to give to you because I've seen the struggle in our county with people getting gainful employment, um, also on the weekend. You know, that's a strenuous time for anyone. I know several people that have been in the jail system and not been able to obtain the medication in the time that they have been there. So these are the concerns that I have, and I just wanted to share that with you guys.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anyone else, Ms. Dixon?
There are no more speakers, Mr. President.
Uh, well, with no one else signed up, this will conclude the hearing for zero twenty-one, twenty-two. Gentlemen, thank you for your presentation. We'll, uh, take this up at a future meeting. And we're going to go ahead and take a short recess, and we'll start back at seven thirty. Thank you. Good evening, Chair. Calls to order Legislative Session Day twenty-two dash zero twenty-four. I would ask you to please join us in standing for the pledge, followed by opening prayer by Councilman Giangordano.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, we pray for your hand and protection and the healing over all the residents in Florida, the Carolinas and the Caribbean, for those who have lost their lives, for those who are struggling, have no home. We ask that your powerful protection will be with them through the storm. May you protect them, guide them to safety with your wisdom. We ask that you continue to protect and heal the brave men and women, first responders, police, EMS, and other community organizations that have assisted those affected. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilman Giangordano. Item number four, presentation of proclamations, we have none this evening. Five, consideration of petitions, applications, appointments, and nominations. Department of Social Services Advisory Board may have a motion, please. Anyone?
Council President?
Mr. Schrude.
I make a motion to approve the executive appointment to the Department of Social Services Advisory Board of new appointment Patricia Weaver and Pamela Smith and the reappointment of Alicia Hamilton.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Uh, if I may, um, I have the great honor to serve as the liaison to the Department of Social Services. And, uh, Ms. Harris, in my stay, uh, we've both had an opportunity to work with these folks from time to time. I think they'll be a great addition to the board and, um, continuation of, of others. So, um, I gladly will approve those. Anyone else? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Woods?
Aye.
Mr. Giangordano?
Aye.
Mr. Schrude?
Aye.
Mr. Wagner?
Aye.
Mr. Buola?
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative and zero in the negative, the appointments are hereby approved. Special presentations, we have none. Agenda item number seven, approval of minutes, Legislative Day twenty-two dash zero twenty-three, September twentieth, twenty-twenty-two. Are there any corrections to the minutes? There being no corrections, the minutes stand approved. Agenda item number eight, introduction and consideration of resolutions. Resolution zero twenty-three dash twenty-two, historic landmark, eleven twenty-three Baldwin Mill Road, Kurt's Mansion. May I have a motion?
Council President?
Mr. Schrude.
I make a motion to approve resolution zero two-three dash two-two, historic landmark, eleven twenty-three Baldwin Mill Road, the Kurt's Mansion.
Second?
Second.
And then, Mr. Buola? It's been moved in second to approve resolution zero twenty-three, twenty-two. Any comments? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Woods?
Aye.
Mr. Giangordano?
Aye.
Mr. Schrude?
Aye.
Mr. Wagner?
Aye.
Mr. Buola?
Aye.
Seven votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, resolution zero twenty-three dash twenty-two is hereby approved. Resolution zero twenty-four dash twenty-two, Hazard Mitigation Plan twenty-twenty-two, is there a motion?
Move to approve resolution number zero dash, zero twenty-four dash twenty-two, Hazard Mitigation Plan twenty-twenty-two.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. Been moved in second to approve resolution zero twenty-four dash twenty-two. Are there any comments?
Mr. President?
Mr. Woods?
Once again, I thank the, uh, our emergency management staff for putting that together. It's taken a lot of time and effort and, uh, going back and forth with FEMA and all the municipalities involved to make it a outstanding document, and they did a great job on this one, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. Anyone else? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Woods?
Aye.
Mr. Giangordano?
Aye.
Mr. Schrude?
Aye.
Mr. Wagner?
Aye.
Mr. Buola?
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative and zero in the negative, resolution zero twenty-four is hereby approved. Agenda item number nine, introduction of bills, we have none. Agenda item number ten, introduction and consideration of amendments. Uh, Mr. Wagner, please read amendments one through four into the record for introduction.
Amendments to Bill number twenty-two dash zero twenty-one, introduced by Council President Vincendi at the request of the county executive and Councilmember Schrude. Amendment number one, on page one and lines eight and ten, strike thirty-two and substitute in lieu thereof thirty-six. Amendment number two, on page one after line seventeen, insert the following, zero five dash zero two-two seven three-eight, three-two-three-four Scarborough Road. Amendment number three, on page one after line twenty-three, insert the following, zero five dash zero-zero-nine-nine-zero-one, three-three-two-six Scarborough Road. Amendment number four, on page two after line seventeen, insert the following, zero five dash zero-three-four-three-five-three, three-zero-three-zero Dublin Road.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Um, due to the time constraints and nature of these amendments, uh, they will be considered this evening. Amendments to Bill twenty-two dash zero twenty-one, tax credit for properties near refuse disposal system. Is there a motion?
Council President?
Mr. Schrude?
I make a motion to approve amendments one, two, three, and four to Bill number twenty-two dash zero two-one.
Thank you. May I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Johnson. It's moved in second to approve the amendments to Bill twenty-two dash zero twenty-one. Any comments? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Woods?
Aye.
Mr. Giangordano?
Aye.
Mr. Schrude?
Aye.
Mr. Wagner?
Aye.
Mr. Buola?
Aye.
Being seven votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, amendments one through four are hereby approved. Agenda item number eleven, call for final reading of bills, we have none. Enrollment of bills, number twelve, we have none. And item number thirteen, unfinished business, we have none. Fourteen, new business. Uh, the adequate, adequate public advisory board, uh, adequate public facilities advisory board met on June twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two. And, uh, we are required under a law to present its report to Harford County Council. Uh, gentlemen, uh, tomorrow you will have a copy of this report in your files, uh, for review. And in that report, uh, Harford County Public Schools, uh, realized an enrollment number of thirty-seven thousand eight hundred and forty-three students. It's a decrease of a hundred and thirteen students since the start of the school year in September twenty-twenty-one. Uh, that, that number is broken down by schools, elementary schools, middle schools, high school, John Archer, and Swan Creek. Mr. Cornell Brown reported that the Bel Air Elementary, Haverty Grace Elementary, and Homestead Wakefield Elementary have, all have reached their, were expected to reach the APFO one-hundred-and-ten percent threshold for moratorium. And additionally, uh, Bel Air Middle School was over capacity. However, the Board of Education in Harford County approved the superintendent's recommendations to balance enrollment at secondary schools. As far as Mr. Sandless's report, um, the funds collected, uh, to date have exceeded budget estimates uh, by nearly six million dollars and will be applied. That money will be applied to the Board of Ed debt service. And Mr. Sandless, if you would like to elaborate?
This is largely just for informational purposes, but we have, uh, three dedicated revenue sources, uh, which we use to pay for our school debt service. It's, uh, half of the transfer tax, two-thirds of the recordation tax, and all the impact fees. And while all of those revenues have seen a big increase because of the hot housing market we've been experiencing the past couple of years, um, they are still less than, um, what our budget at debt service is. Now, that's not a budget issue. We budget the full amount of, of debt service. It just means that, that there's additional, um, uh, tax dollars, uh, from, from other revenue sources, general fund dollars, um, that kind of, uh, make up that, make up that difference. So again, it's just for, uh, informational, uh, purposes as it relates to our dedicated revenues and our, um, our school debt service.
Thank you, Mr. Sandless. And gentlemen, um, in the report, there may be some other things that you may have questions for, and I believe Mr. Sandless would be available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you. Agenda item fifteen, business from the president. This past two weeks has been very painful and tragic, uh, for many of our families across the county with the loss of either loved ones or family and friends. Jeanne and I wish to express our deepest condolences to the Darty, Lamont, Smith, Bowman, Ayers, and Mensor Cargo families. Um, our first responders, and firing EMS family has lost two members, uh, Mr. Lamont from Wafer, three, and, uh, DB Smith Senior from Aberdeen. Our emergency manager, Mr. Rick Ayers, lost his mother, Mary Ayers. Wayne Darty, uh, in Haverty Grace, who was a former councilman and mayor of Haverty Grace. He served also as a Haverty Grace police officer in the, in the, uh, Harford County Sheriff's Office for quite some time. And I do remember when I first joined Haverty Grace American Legion Ambulance Corps back in the seventies, the early seventies, Wayne was there. So, uh, his service to the county goes way back. Uh, also, uh, we lost Eddie Bowman, uh, who lived on Aldina Road, worked for Barton Felder for years. Uh, he, out of the blue, one day, Jeanne had a problem with her tire, flat tire. He rolled up on her and got out of his truck, pulled her tire off the vehicle, fixed it, put it back on, and down the road he went, never said anything but thank you and be safe. So, um, he's going to be missed as well. And then Carrie Mensor Cargo, uh, died tragically in a car accident this past week or so. Um, and she was extremely active in her community, and she will be missed, as they all will, by many. So, uh, we ask you to keep all these families and their friends in your thoughts and prayers. Uh, and with that, Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Council President. I'll yield my time tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Woods?
Thank you, Mr. President. Council President and I saw Mary Ayers, not even a month ago, I guess it was. We were up E O C and saw Rick, so condolences to Rick. Also, from the Folsom Fire Department, uh, a member joined a few years back now, Tom Weagle. He, uh, became an EMT and one of our fire police members and was often on our scenes, taking pictures, photograph, and ran our birthday parties and, and, uh, a lot of the public safety. He passed away unexpectedly on Monday, and his services were today. A member that joined when I was fire chief, Drew Holman, uh, younger member, he passed away visiting his family down in Florida, unexpectedly also, and, uh, earlier this week. And he was a member of Folsom for years, Joppa Magnolia as well. And, uh, then Dan Lemon. And Dan, Dan and I have known each other for a very long time. And unfortunately, I was stuck down south during the hurricane and couldn't get up here. So I missed his funeral, unfortunately. We formed the county rescue team together, and this week we were supposed to do some work on what's next for the county together. And, uh, just going to miss him a whole lot. It wasn't even, I guess, a month ago, he and I are on a rescue boat together out in the river. So with chemo a couple of times a day, and every day he was still getting it every day. So, um, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. Mr. Giangordano?
Thank you, Council President. So on this past weekend, it was a gloomy weekend. It was, um, raining out. But, uh, for some kids of the Special Olympics, we were able to have a bocce tournament for them at the Equestrian Center. I think we had ten teams. It was raining, but the kids had a fantastic time. I'm really glad that, uh, that was, uh, part of the Society of Italian American Businessmen. Put that on to support the Special Olympics. It's going to be an annual event held at the Equestrian Center. And, uh, the kids really appreciated that. And I, uh, to all the people down in Florida, uh, I know a lot of people down there, um, just very tragic and, uh, you know, do whatever we can for them. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Mr. Giangordano. Mr. Schrude?
Thank you, Council President. Um, just a few things, uh, the other week, um, we attended the CTP tour with the Department of Transportation here, myself and, you know, Council President Vincendi and, uh, Councilman Johnson were here, and there may have been others as well represented. Um, just, you know, it's a great opportunity for us to advocate for highway safety, safety improvements around the county. And, um, I thought it went very well. They seemed very receptive of, of many of the things we discussed. Um, so I thank them for that. Since, uh, Councilman Andre Johnson didn't mention it, we both attended the Haverty Grace High School Hall of Fame Ceremony. So I want to congratulate all those in, what did I say? I said Haverty Grace. Edgewood, I'm looking at Edgewood. Yeah, the, the eleventh Annual Edgewood High School Hall of Fame. And I want to congratulate all the inductees, including, uh, David Richmond, George Flancher, Robert Frisch, Cardell Williams, and Kendra Jackson. They've just, um, have given so much back since graduating from that school. And, um, there was also many that attended that have received this reward, award in the past. And, uh, I thank all of them for what they've done to contribute back to our, our county and community and nation. Also, I want to congratulate, um, my friend Michelle Hoppy Tankersley on the twenty-fifth anniversary of her tutoring, tutoring service in Jarrettsville. Also, TLC Preschool and Daycare, their grand opening also in Jarrettsville. And then we had the Darlington Apple Festival over the weekend. Just want to, uh, say a big thanks to everyone involved that pulls off that very large event in the small town for our entire county and, and those from all over. I especially want to congratulate Frank Garrett, who received the Apple of Our Eye Award. Also, I see my friend Bob Tibbs in the audience, and I want to, uh, thank him for his continued advocacy for the, the, um, livestock trailer at North Harford. I know that we recently saw, uh, a nice, um, press release on that. And I know that you and I and a lot of people have been pushing for that. I thank the administration for getting that into budget, um, for all the kids at North Harford that can get their animals around, to all the different shows and to the vet and, and, uh, all the places that they need to go. And I know all about the vet lately, so that is very necessary. So thank you so much. Also, um, you know, the passing of Daniel Lamont, um, you know, just, uh, real tragic. He fought a really, really, really hard battle with cancer, but it didn't stop him. He was out there doing water rescue missions and just doing so much. He was a member of the Wafer Volunteer Fire Company as well, and he was also a career firefighter. And, you know, we just appreciate everything he has done for our community. Also, Rick, Rick Ayers, um, you know, I'm just so sorry about your mother, Mary. She's in all of our thoughts and prayers. And then, um, Wayne Darty, of course, he's given so much to our county and especially the city of Haverty Grace. Want to congratulate both Jim Riley and Aaron Penman on their retirements on last Friday. And I wish them both very well in their future endeavors. Lastly, um, Hurricane Ian, um, just such a horrific storm. And just keeping all those impacted in my thoughts and prayers. I did reach out some of my friends in Florida to see how they fared. And, um, you know, some fared okay and some not so okay, so. But there's many in thousands and people impacted. It's just terrible. That's all. Have a night. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schrude. Mr. Wagner?
I too want to extend, uh, sympathies to all those that we've, we've heard of, uh, from other council members already this evening, but especially to, uh, uh, the family of DB Smith and, uh, uh, the fire service there in Aberdeen, that, uh, he was such a mentor and an institution in the Harford County Fire Service and especially at Aberdeen, and trained so many and brought them up through the fire service. And then for Rick Ayers, certainly we are all, uh, Rick's in our thoughts and prayers with the passing. the passing of his mom. I attended the ribbon cutting and grand opening for Say Delicious Confections Bakery, which is on West Bel Air Avenue in Aberdeen, and it's, it's kind of a start to revitalizing the, the Bel Air Avenue of Aberdeen. So, if anybody gets down that way and wants a cookie, a donut, or something sweet, that's the, that's the ideal place to stop in. It's off to a great start, and we wish them well as they move ahead. I attended the Aberdeen Chamber of Commerce meeting on September 27th for their Economic Development Awards. The Economic Development Award went to Famous and Spang Insurance, which has been around forever. Revitalization Award went to the Aberdeen Volunteer Fire Department for the, the new fires, firehouse there and everything they provide for the community. And the Good Neighbor Award went to Golden Corral after their renovation project, and it's, it looks like a whole new structure inside and out. As I won't be here when the new county executive takes over, I would like to encourage and maybe those council members who remain, bring it to his attention that the boards and commissions, of which we have 40 of, if, unless there's a lag in the, the, our IT that doesn't provide accurate information, it appears that there are many boards and commissions that the, and this came up last week when we had the appointments to a couple of them, a lot of those terms have expired, and some of those have definite expiration dates. It's not like they carry on through, it's not like they go ceterminous with the county executive. They are long expired and gone, and, and we still have either people in there, or we have people that have moved to some other location, they're not Harford County residents. And the one in particular that I want to point out and make sure that one is done sooner than later is the Board of Ethics. We don't use the, the Board of Ethics that frequently, but as things move along, you may see that you may have a need to use them more and have hearings with them as, as things move. So, whoever can pass that along coming up, I'd like to see some activity on those 40 boards that we, we refresh them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Mr. Bueller.
Thank you, Council President. Just a couple of brief statements. Jeanne and I would like to extend our sincere condolences to Rick Ayers and his family on the loss of their mother, and also to the Darty family on the loss of Wayne Darty. Again, just we'd like to extend our sincere condolences, and we'll keep them, the families in our prayers for strength and comfort. And that's all I have this evening, Council President.
Thank you, Mr. Bueller. Agenda item number 17, Comments and Input From Attending Citizens. Ms. Dixon, do we have anyone signed up?
We do, Mr. President. We have six this evening. John Malamo, followed by Ellen Shinelli.
Just remind everyone of your time and be respectful. Good evening, sir. Name and address for the record.
Sir, good evening to you and your colleagues. John P. Malamo, 2402 Eagleview Drive, Bel Air, Maryland. On 6 September 2022, I offered $1,000 to the charity of choice in the name of whichever one of you could conclusively prove that the Harford County Airport could operate a general aviation airport as a permitted use at its present location and comply with all of Part 1 of the Present Zoning Code, Hearing Examiner's Conditions, and zoning case 5814, and all of the MAA and FAA requirements for a general aviation airport, and $500 for identification in any location in Harford County for such an operation. No one answered. I'm left to conclude that my position on the situation is correct. It cannot, and there is not. Everybody I spoke with bet the council would take no action. No one would consider that the council would take action. Council has become known for taking no action. You have shown yourselves for what you are. On other notes related to land use and zoning code, Mr. Glassman is not on the ballot for any county elected position. His policies, curious approach to land use laws, the zoning code, and an expansive view of executive authorities, practices, processes, and procedures were, they were rejected. Maybe the next administration will be more attentive to the issues of Harford County residents, the zoning code, land use laws, their application, and the limits of executive authorities. The council will have a new majority, no more than three of you could possibly return. Hopefully, the next council will look at the zoning code, land use laws, their own authorities, and apply them for the benefit of all residents, not just special interests. Harford County will develop. Whether it will look like Philadelphia, Baltimore, Washington DC, or Newark, when finished, will be decided in these chambers, not by the residents of Harford County, but the Harford County Council. Perhaps that council will better appreciate the voices of the residents they represent, the zoning code and land use laws. Finally, governing is more than just reminding people that they have only three minutes or attending social activities with constituents or rubber stamp approvals of legislation. You govern by my consent, for my benefit, not just those of the special interest, and certainly not your own. I will thank you to remember that while you are still in office. Good night.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening, ma'am.
I'd like to thank John. I think that was really well said. I really think he made some great points. So, a year ago...
I need your name and address, ma'am.
Oh, my name is Ellen Shinelli, 1704 Park Beach Drive in Perryman.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome. So, a year ago, probably like a lot of Harford County residents, I didn't even know there were council meetings. Now, if I'm not attending, I'm likely watching live. But today, I have a better understanding of why things are the way they are in Harford County. Some examples would be the Evamar. Evamar, the county looked the other way when an obvious multifamily dwelling is repermitted into a single-family home, because everybody knows that a 19-bedroom, 19-bath, 10-garage home will not sell in Harford County. I get tired of hearing that the developer is following code and there's nothing that can be done. Where is the common sense? On August 4th, a Harford County judge denied an injunction to temporarily halt the tree clearing at Abingdon Woods, allowing continued forest, forest removal to occur while knowing that an appeal was in the queue. That same judge granted the Chesapeake Bay Foundation's request six weeks later, which required the developer to stop the clearing but was allowed to continue the work. I pass that area every day, and I can see that that developer is working hard to convert the already cleared land into roads and other infrastructure to support their plan. Am I the only one that thinks that the project will be too far gone to reverse the damage when the project is stopped? Where is the common sense? Now, a developer, this is a third developer, so they're not the same, developer has submitted a new plan for the destruction of the 711 acres of farmland on the Perryman Peninsula. The plan has changed to reduce the number of parking spaces by 600 spots. It has decreased the largest shift employee number by 1,400 to 953. And why not? This is just a piece of paper. History shows that once approved, the developer can change plans and still go forward with the project. Where's the common sense? Why are no elected officials trying to facilitate saving green space, saving forest, saving our waters? In November, I'm going to vote for those representatives that have common sense. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Tim Van Endem, followed by Jeanne Lacore.
Good evening, sir. Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name's Tim Van Endem. I live at 1963 Mitchell Drive. I'm giving you my address under protest as you've basically forced me... You can smile all you want, Patrick, but I don't see you giving me your address.
Sir, stick to your, sir, stick to your comments.
Don't interrupt me, sir. You are an elected official, please listen to me.
Remove him.
That ain't going to work. Because I don't like...
I, I wasn't smiling, I was listening to what you had to say.
You were absolutely... I was not disrespecting you. Have a great night, sir. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. I'll see you next week.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. Jeanne Lacore, 1820, Park Beach Drive, Perryman.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm here to talk about the Perryman Peninsula, and as we've seen, there's a lot of emotions around the travesty that's happening in our community, and the citizens shouldn't be faulted for dealing with what we're having to deal with. And to be informed, citizens, we need information. We don't have direct access to county projects and progress reports, so how can we stay current with proposed development in our backyards? By sheer persistence of others and scouring what public information is available, as a citizen of the Perryman Peninsula, I, along with Ms. Shinelli, learned there was a significant change in scope to the proposed Mitchell Farm development. I learned the project shifted to a high cube freight distribution terminal, increasing building height from 40 feet to 65 feet, yet another significant contortion to an already grotesque project situated on the banks of the Bush River, which feeds directly to the Chesapeake Bay. This proposed shift to the massive project, the numbers just don't add up. Changes to employee counts go down, so there's a deficit to the proposed project benefit in terms of jobs. The corresponding parking spaces and traffic counts don't reduce proportionally. How can this be? Other than citizens being affected by the project, who's paying attention? Clearly, as Mr. Wagner stated, we've let oversight committees such as the Board of Ethics and others lapse. Has the county gotten so cozy with outside interests that we're blind to illogical mathematical manipulations? Meanwhile, Perryman remains underserved, with household incomes less than the Harford County average. As Harford County prepares to celebrate 250 years, what should we celebrate in Perryman? 30 years of dumping in Perryman has not produced the promised economic benefits. For 30 years, that may have been a county oversight, but now that the county clearly knows it's called discrimination. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Greg Lacore, followed by Stacy Stone.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Greg Lacore, 1820, Park Beach Drive. What good have enterprise zones brought to the residents in our area? The enterprise zones is a geographic area that has been granted special tax breaks and exemptions. In Harford County, we have two enterprise zones, Aberdeen, Havity Grace, Edgewood, and Joppa. They're designed to encourage the creation of well-paying jobs, ensure retention, and spur expansion of residents' businesses, promote development and occupancy of vacant, underutilized land and buildings, support the county's commitment of revitalizing older industrial areas of Harford County. There's tax incentives, the tax credits available for 10 years on property taxes. This tax credit's $1,000 tax credit per person in the first year, and increases to $6,000 per employee over three. In 2022, we still have empty freight distribution centers on Route 40 in the Perryman area. These things are ready to be occupied these past nine months of this year. Residents in Perryman, what have we gotten? Foreign ship road repairs on Canning House, Clubhouse, and Locust Road, fresh pavement on Chelsea. There's been no progress or design on anything on Spisushia Road projects. Dropped the Perryman Park project also. Enterprise Zone Resolution 1217 was sponsored by Councilman Bueller. It added 114 acres to the enterprise zone. Besides the two lots on the Perryman Road and one on Chelsea Road, it added 88 acres to a lot on Old Stepney Road. This expansion came outside the 10-year reevaluation cycle of the normal enterprise zone. It was also one of six current councilmen that voted to expand the enterprise zoning Abington Resolution 719 on the 9th of April 2019, to give tax breaks for the Abington Woods. It was also outside the 10-year renewal cycle. Now comes some questions during this resolutions, these resolutions during this time. Any improvements, resolutions to improve the bus stops? No. To add sidewalks? No. To add crosswalks? No. To improve the parks? No. I brought this subject up at the beginning of the session last year. Welcome one, the homeless shelter. Anything to do with their transportation, helping these people gain good employment and to get them back on their feet? No. So, you can just see that with all this, that the council voted in 2017 to add three more parcels of land to Perryman, to the enterprise zone, 14 acres on Chelsea side, 28 acres on the Perryman. The question, Councilman Bueller, did you ask anybody outside the homeowners? Do you ask anybody outside the landowners? Did you consult with anybody of the residents in this area? Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. Stacy Stone, 2106 Park Beach Drive. Appreciate the comments on State Highway, Tim Smith's group coming to visit Harford County, as is done annually. Quite familiar with CPTP and the tours that happen. Been involved with those in the past myself. It's quite disappointing to see when I looked at the CTP, there's nothing in there for Perryman. Not surprised, but disappointed. So, moving forward, let's talk a bit about Spisushia Road. What's happened with the overhyped vehicle monitoring system since this law was enacted by state? What has the county done? Is there a county law allowing this to happen? Because that's required. Where's that team that needs to be put together to analyze locations for overhyped vehicle detection systems? Ironically, one of the requirements is evaluating existing signage and make recommendations for improvements. I personally have done that in Perryman, made the recommendation to State Highway. I'm working with Harford County, trying to get them together because the two jurisdictions butt up against each other. That's what I've done. What have you all done? What are you going to do? Are you ever going to do something for us? Because we're waiting. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
There are no more speakers, Mr. President.
Ms. Stone, just for your information, there was quite a bit of time spent on Perryman and other roads during that meeting, during the CTP meeting, and I'll be more than glad to share the information with you after this meeting.
Did you have the document?
There was. You can ask Councilman Johnson, you can ask Councilman Schrude. It was. I'll, I'll meet with you after.
Were you looking at the document?
I was here. I heard the conversation, so I'll share it with you.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I have the document.
Yes, yes. With no one else signed up, this meeting will be adjourned.